So it's just like I said, hats off to them, they do a great job.
Thank you, and those people who serve with you, let them know we appreciate them, and our citizens do, and you know, it's a thankless job, a lot of times we understand, but you save lives, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we move to new business, we have a consideration, a resolution number R-2016-06 authorizing and renaming of a street. Mr. Mutter?
Thank you Mayor. In June of 2015, David A. Foyle Jr. was presented with the prestigious Distinguished Flying Cross, one of the highest medals bestowed by the United States Air Force by Congressman Paul Gosar. The medal was to honor and recognize his extraordinary valor during his military service in World War II, where he risked his life to save his fellow airmen after their aircraft was disabled by enemy ordinance. Dave Foyle, a Cholo citizen, served on the original Cholo City Council after the incorporation in 1953, and remained on the council until his term ended in June 1956. He later rejoined the city council in 1972, where he was elected by his fellow council members to serve as mayor from July of 1972 through July of 1976. At the council retreat in October, the city council members discussed renaming a street in Cholo to honor Dave Foyle for his legacy of public and community service. Given his service in the Army Air Corps, and to recognize his heroic actions in World War II, city staff believes one of the most appropriate locations is a roadway at the Cholo Regional Airport. Through Resolution Number 2016-06, North Airport Drive, the entryway into the airport, would be renamed David A. Foyle Jr. Drive.
Thank you. This time we have a little clip we'd like to play, if possible, here.
Staff Sergeant David A. Foyle distinguished himself by heroism while participating in aerial flight as flight engineer and gunner on a B-26 medium bomber near Bastogne, Germany on 5 January 1945. On that day, during a bombing mission in support of General Patton's Third Army, two armed bombs became lodged in an open bomb bay door. Sergeant Foyle selflessly took it upon himself to climb atop the bomb and assess the situation. Knowing the plane could not land in its condition, Sergeant Foyle heroically disarmed the bomb by unscrewing and removing the fuse containing C4 by hand. After handing the live fuse to another member of the crew, Sergeant Foyle worked to dislodge two bombs so the plane could land safely. All of these actions were performed while mounted on top of armed munitions and in an open bomb bay door with freezing temperatures and no safety devices. Sergeant Foyle successfully disarmed two bombs and was able to dislodge them to drop from the plane, enabling the plane to land safely, saving not only his own life, but the lives of the pilot and the crew. The outstanding heroism and selfless devotion to duty displayed by Sergeant Foyle reflect great credit upon himself and the United States Air Force. Sir, it's an honor to present you with your Distinguished Flying Cross Medal.
You know, it is a great award that he received the Distinguished Flying Cross that night, and we're grateful to have him here tonight. I need a motion or comments from the council here.
First of all, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-06 authorizing, renaming North Airport Drive to David A. Foyle Jr. Drive. I worked with Dave a long time ago, and I've worked with him for years, and I appreciate his contributions to our community, and the legacy that he leaves to our community is just invaluable, and we appreciate that so much.
Thank you. You have a motion? May I have a second? Councilmember Kelly?
Yes. Or you?
Go ahead.
I wanted to second it, but I think we got others that want to as well. Why don't we just all second it, so we're on the record? But anyway, I want to say a personal thank you for your contributions that I know of in the city of Cholo. And I'm gonna tell a little story about it, whereby many, many years ago, and I don't have a date, he and another real estate broker in this town got together and named the cities in this town. And they named those cities after old line families, as you well know.
Streets.
Streets and towns. And they named them, thank you, that way, and set this grid up, and I think they did a fabulous job. Of course, they didn't name any after themselves, and that was Clarence Spill and Dave Foyle, who did that job for the city, and then compounded with that, and our knowledge now of Dave's heroic effort in World War II, that bomber. And I'm just wondering if he had an approved OSHA safety harness on when he did that. He might be subject to a fine if we don't be careful here. But anyhow, thank you so much, Dave, and I'm happy to be part of seeing to it that this street is named after you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate it. Councilwoman McCovas?
I'm just wondering if there's somebody here that can retell that story, because it was very, very interesting, and very heroic actions, and I don't think that everybody understands exactly what happened that day, that he saved those airmen.
My brief understanding was there was a weapon that was stuck in the cargo underneath, and they were not able to land. And had they landed with that there, they would have, you know, blown up the airship that they were on. So Dave went down in totally, just without any OSHA-approved harness, and worked until he was able to get that weapon released to the point where it either dropped out of the sky, or at least it was not in the way, so they were able to land, and he saved his crew, and who knows what other people he saved in that heroic effort. It took the family years of petitioning and working and finally getting somebody who would listen to, and then they were able to go back and find some of the people. They found someone who was still there, who had verified the story, and then they were able to get the award. So it took some effort there, and I appreciate it. I just need a vote on this, if we can. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See that pass. Now Dave? We probably have Public Works and Safety that can install this somewhere in your house. We'll put an identical one, a little larger, on the street, but we'd like you to come up and receive this here tonight.
Congratulations, Dave.
Thank you, Jean.
Hello, Connie.
Good to see you.
Thank you sir for your presence.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you very much for all you did.
Mr. Foyle, it's an honor.
Yes. Bill Carr.
And you, Ann.
I need you to hold it up, not straight at me, because it's very reflective. There you go.
Like it's supposed to be.
Hey, make sure he gets that smile. And hang that picture next to the signs.
Dave, you're welcome to say a word or two, if you'd like. If you want to come up.
Going to the airport is appropriate. I have a long history with that airport.
She did.
Connie will remember. That's when I first met her, when we were at the airport committee.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for what you've done for our community. Paul? Our next item we have this evening is a consideration of endorsement by the city of Cholo for Utility Service Partners Service Line Warranty Program. Mr. Justin Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time tonight. At the March 1st, 2016 meeting, the city council was presented with a proposal from Utility Service Partners to offer Cholo residents a voluntary utility service line protection plan for water and sewer service lines at no cost to the city. The plan covers repairs for leaks, breaks, and clogs on the property owner's portion of the service lines, items typically not covered by most homeowners' insurance policies. USP's warranty program is endorsed by both the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and the National League of Cities. Because of its outstanding and unique features, USP has approached city staff to request an endorsement from the council to offer this service to city residents. At the meeting, several council members requested more information about USP and the warranty program before taking action on this endorsement. Staff contacted USP and spoke to Ms. Ashley Shaworski, and the council's questions and her answers are shown below, and I'll just quickly summarize those. And we do have Ashley here with us tonight to answer any subsequent questions too. Question number one, do all cities pay the same rates? Yes, a little over two years ago, USP developed standard pricing for all of its new city partners that have 50,000 households or less. Question number two, does USP offer the warranty to cities that do not endorse the program? The answer is no. USP's program is only available to cities through a partnership with the municipality. Question number three, can residents choose the local contractor to perform the work? The answer is yes. Once USP partners with the city, the company begins to develop a local contractor network. The city can be as much or as little involved with selecting contractors as it so chooses. USP will only use local licensed contractors to repair any work. Number four, are there a minimum number of signups required? The answer is no. USP has no type of minimum participation. Question five, do other companies provide this type of program, and how much do they charge? The answer is yes, there are other companies that offer a similar type program, but USP is the only service line program endorsed by the National League of Cities and Arizona's League of Cities and Towns. What also separates USP from other companies is it has no service fees, no deductibles, and no annual or lifetime limits. Question number six, what about giving competitors a chance to bid for this endorsement? Regarding the council's concerns about endorsing USP without giving competitors a chance to bid, USP finds it hasn't been a concern for other municipalities since the city isn't actually purchasing anything, is simply making a voluntary program that can save, oh, sorry, I got off track here, isn't actually purchasing anything in the city, is simply making a voluntary program which can save citizens' money for repairs available to its residents. And the final question I had listed was how do other cities rate the program? As part of your packet, I put a spreadsheet in there that listed references from other cities, and it's been updated in other cities. Of all the cities I talked to, I believe there were eleven, but I left a message of four with nine responses. All nine cities have stated that they would sign up again, and this gives you the various statistics from most cities. And it's just the last remark there on the page. So based on staff's research and the additional information provided by USP, city staff recommends the council endorse utility service partners and its warranty program as value-added service to the Cholo residents. Residents who choose to participate may select one, two, or all three of the services. For residents that participate, USP will pay for repairs. All repairs will be performed to local standards. Customers will have access to a 24-hour hotline, and USP will be responsible for all aspects of the program. If endorsed, USP will conduct three marketing campaigns annually for three years, consisting of mailing inserts and utility bills and paying all advertising costs. And I have Ashley here tonight. Ashley, if you would like to come. The council has any questions?
Hello.
Hi, Ashley.
Thank you for having me. The one thing I did just want to mention is we do not require you to put a bill in the insert. We bill directly for that, so there's no administrative time or cost for the city.
Right, Smear.
I know this is just for people living at the city limits of Cholo. I know some people kind of get confused. They can have a city address, but they live in Navajo County. Has this been presented to the county yet?
It has.
Because we have, I mean, people live just outside the city limits, but they have a city address, and I already can hear this conversation going on, because it's that way when you're voting for city council and stuff, the same way. Well, I can vote because I have a city address, and this is going to come up the same way, so it'd be nice if maybe you can present this to the county, so we cover our whole area.
Sure. We standardly reach out to the city first to give the city the opportunity. We definitely can reach out to the county. Those homeowners that are outside of the city limits, are they on any of the city's utilities?
There's at least 1,000 customers on city water, yes.
So if there are residents that are on city water that are outside of the city limits, if you wanted to provide us a list of just those people that are outside of the city limits that are on city water, they would be eligible for the program as well, and we can make sure that they get a letter.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes. More than one of the council members did have questions, and I appreciate being one of those, that staff has done their homework, and gotten back, and had such a glowing report from those cities your company does business with. I would tell you candidly, I don't care for the fact that you're allowed to use our logo. I'm not saying that that would be a reason I would vote, no. It will be understood that in all of your advertising and everything that is done involving the city, that it will be clear to people that this is a voluntary program, and they are not required to participate. Is that true?
That is correct. In all of our marketing material, to begin with, we would never mail anything to your residents without your approval prior. So anything that we would ever send out, we send that over for your review and approval. Without that approval, even if we have a signed agreement, we would not mail to your residents for that campaign. But our letter clearly states that this is a voluntary program.
And along with that, just reiterating what's already been said, I believe, there are other companies that do provide something similar, at least, and that every resident of Cholo would be free to engage with that company, another company, for our services. It is not exclusive that if we do this, only you and your company would be able to provide this kind of coverage. However, only you and your company would be endorsed, if you will, by the city.
Correct. It doesn't deter any competitor from direct mailing to your homeowners. We are actually one of the only company out there that would never mail to your residents without your approval first. So that doesn't stop any competitor just from mailing to your residents directly. By our partnership with the city, it really allows us to offer a more generous amount of coverage, where typically the services have a very similar monthly premium. But what greatly differs is that we do not have a service fee or deductible, as well as we do not have annual or lifetime limits, and we do not limit the number of claims someone can have in a calendar year. So because of our partnership with the city, we are able to offer that more generous benefits to your residents.
Thank you.
Right, Smear.
Real quick question, just because most of these contractors up here are going to be our buddies. What's your turnaround payment plan on somebody that does a repair on a house?
Typically, it's within 30 days, but it depends on how quickly that contractor is in getting the invoice to us. So that's sometimes what delays it.
Will you just briefly summarize the coverage of what a person is going to be covered for?
Sure.
And so some of our people will understand that, please.
Sounds great. We actually offer three completely separate programs, so someone can choose to enroll in any combination of them, or none of them. But we offer the external water line coverage, external sewer line coverage, as well as the in-home plumbing. The two external warranties, whether it's the water or sewer line, we cover those very similar, where we begin to cover those lines wherever they become the resident's responsibility, all the way to where they would daylight inside of the home. So if a resident were to have an issue, whether it's a broken, cracked, leaking pipe, a clog that just needs cleared out, anything that would impede the flow of those lines, they give us a call, and we send out one of those local licensed plumbers to do the repair. And what the resident actually receives for the external coverage is up to $4,000 towards each and every repair incident. So again, we do not have any type of annual or lifetime limit, as well as no limit on number of claims that someone can have in a calendar year. That homeowner would receive up to that $4,000 towards each and every repair incident. And then if the repair did need to be done in the public street, the homeowner receives up to an additional $4,000 for public street repair per incident, and up to an additional $500 for public sidewalk repair per incident. And we do not have any type of service fee or deductible. No forms for the resident to fill out. The contractor bills us directly. And for our third product, which is the in-home, this kind of picks up where the other two leave off, and this actually was created by request of our current city partners. It was the missing piece of the puzzle, so it's any in-home water supply, sewer, or drain lines that would be in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. This also would include any lines that may be embedded under a slab or basement floor, as well as the repair of clogged toilets. And that's very similar, where there's no service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limits, no limits on number of claims someone can have in a calendar year, and they receive up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident.
I have to jackhammer up my concrete floor to get to the broken pipe. The $3,000 may or may not be sufficient to cover the entire cost of the claim, but it would help.
Correct.
Is there anything for injector pumps at all, components? We have some high-pressure, you know, sewer systems here that...
So standardly, those additional apparatuses would not be covered. We offer a standard price for everyone, and unfortunately, in order to cover something like that, it would have to raise the price for everyone within the city, and I don't think all of the residents would like to pay more for just those few. But that is something that's clearly stated in the terms and conditions, so the homeowner will be well aware.
And what is the cost to a citizen?
Sure. So the external water line coverage is $5.25 a month. The external sewer line coverage is $7.25 per month, and in-home plumbing is $6.50 per month. A resident does receive about a $5 per product discount if they sign up and pay annually, but that never locks them into a year agreement with us. If they need to cancel at any time, they give us a call or go online, and they're able to receive a refund for any premium they didn't use.
Any other questions, council? Appreciate you being here, Ashley.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me.
Time to look for a motion. Councilmember Crennigan?
I move to approve the agreement with Silver Creek. Wrong.
Okay, somebody else have it up.
Right, Smear.
I move to authorize endorsements by the city of Cholo of the Utility Service Partners Service Line Warranty Program, an endorsement review and supported by the National League of Cities and the League of Arizona Cities and Towns.
Have a motion, may I have a second? By Councilwoman McCovas, any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
I do wish to make a clarification statement and be corrected if I'm in error in this statement, but I believe that I intend to vote in favor of this motion based on that there will be no charges to the city and no cost to the city for administrating this program of any kind. We won't be collecting their bills, we won't be collecting their money for them, or anything else of the sort. It's totally optional to our citizens to engage this service or not, and I'm still having a hard time seeing what's wrong with it. So I will be voting for it, and understanding that the agreement that we are entering into as a city of Cholo does not attach a service fee to the monthly billing to be a form of revenue to the city. We could do that. They offer that service, and we are electing in this motion, as I understand it, to not tack on a fee in order to give each of our citizens the very best price, because it just simply raises their monthly charge if we add a fee.
That's what we understand.
If anything I said is in error, I want to be corrected now.
I'll correct. The prices she quoted were the non-royalty prices.
Thank you.
Have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Next item is consideration of agreement with Silver Creek Irrigation District and Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company for Elk Springs Draw Water Management Plan. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city entered into an agreement with the Silver Creek Irrigation District, which we'll call SKID to shorten that up, and Cholo Irrigation on June 29th of 2005. The agreement concerned, among other things, the city's and Cholo Irrigation Company's applications to appropriate the waters of Cholo Lake. As part of that agreement with SKID, they agreed that they would not object to any of the applications that are filed by Cholo Irrigation or the city, or call for any of the water stored in the Upper Basin and Cholo for irrigation in Snowflake and Taylor. In that agreement, the parties agreed to meet within six months to get an agreement in place on a plan relating to what is called Elk Springs Draw. For a variety of reasons, this didn't take place at that time. I think there's a map showing up here, as you can see. Who's doing the cursor? Is that you, Bill? Okay. There's Elk Springs Draw. Thanks, Bill. I didn't know who was moving that. But anyways, what Bill is pointing out there is Elk Springs Draw, and that feeds down into Scott Reservoir, and then through some other drains is into the Cholo Lake system. Many years ago, SKID had developed a system that in times of wet years, when there was excess drains and water, it could be diverted in what is called the Rocky Arroyo. Bill, can you kind of point that out to them on there? That's the other drainage system. That system goes down and fills Little Mormon Lake, Whipple Lake, and Long Lake for use in the SKID irrigation system. Over the years, this diversion and ditch have deteriorated, and SKID has kind of recognized the importance of gaining additional water resources in wet years. So the benefit to the city in Cholo Irrigation is that it would reduce in really wet years flooding, and it would go down and fill the lakes that are located there near the Cholo Airport. SKID will need to obtain what they call a ditch bill easement so they can repair the diversion and drainage which is on Forest Service property. So this agreement provides that the parties will jointly develop and agree to an acceptable water management plan to divert water into the Silver Creek drainage at the head of Elk Springs Draw. What the plan includes right now is a yearly meeting to discuss the drainage and weather conditions, and the need to divert the water. The parties will work together to determine if the diversion is necessary. SKID has already agreed that there would be a minimum pool with game and fish in Fools Hollow Lake for fish and wildlife. So water would really only be diverted if it was a really wet year, and if the water was going to run over the spillway at Cholo Lake. And the city has agreed to cooperate and help SKID in obtaining the ditch bill easement, and to assist in obtaining funding from the Navajo County Flood Control District to improve the diversion and cleaning the ditch. The Cholo Irrigation Board has already approved the agreement, I believe, last week in their meeting, and the SKID Board has it on their approval meeting tonight on their agenda. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any questions regarding the agreement.
Councilmember Crennigan?
Is this going to cost the city anything?
No.
So in wet years, the water would bypass Cholo Lake?
Yeah, as you can see on the map there, Mayor, there's a lot of streams that run into Cholo Lake, Elk Springs Draw and Porter Creek just being one of them. But basically, what it would do is that ditch goes from Elk Springs Draw out into that Rocky Arroyo stream, which is right there where Bill's pointing on his thing, and then it goes down into the lake. So essentially helps us in wet years with flooding issues, and keeps the water coming into Cholo, possibly crossing water coming into Cholo, possibly crossing over our bridge downtown and everything, but going around it into those lakes. And for Silver Creek, it provides a benefit from them, because they can store water in those lakes for many years once they're full and continue to irrigate out of them. So it's a benefit to them.
Does this decrease the opportunity of filling Full Hollow?
No. Basically, we have the... Because we control those rights to that agreement, we can control how much water is in Cholo Lake and Fools Hollow Lake. And, you know, you gotta look at the weather conditions for the year. You gotta look at how much snowpack. There's a lot of things that go into it. For example, this year, we had a pretty wet November, December, but then it pretty much dried up after that. So we would have said, we're not diverting any water, because it's drying up. But if there was 10 feet of snow up in the mountains, we'd say differently. You know, we'd say, okay, it's probably a good thing to divert it, because there's gonna be a lot of water coming down through here.
Okay.
It's just one of those things you gotta look at year to year on what the weather is and how much snowpack and everything.
Councilmember Kelly.
Does that drainage not continue north and run into White Mountain Lakes?
Eventually will, run all the way down through there.
Right, okay.
There's some... Not to complicate it, but down in there, through there, there's some different diversions that diverted into different lakes and different places as Silver Creek.
Which would be used for irrigation again, right? And not be going over Cholo Lake spillway.
Right.
Can anybody see a reason why this is a bad idea?
No, we think it's a good idea, and it's one of the things that the parties have kind of already previously agreed to. It just was never kind of put into writing, so to speak. But in that 2005 agreement, we'd agreed to meet and get something in writing. And if, you know, if once Cholo Lake and Fools Hollow Lake are filled, if the water goes over there, it's just lost. As some of you know, it just goes down into Lone Pine Dam and to Shones Dam and just kind of seeps down into the ground. They can't really use it for irrigation after that. So Silver Creek understands the importance of... They'd rather get it up here and divert it down through there to help their system. But they understand it's only gonna be in really wet years.
Councilmember Crittenen.
The drainage or the ditches that are gonna be repaired going across into Little Mormon Lake, et cetera, are those going through any residential areas? And is there any risk anywhere along the way if we divert water and it goes through the residential areas?
No, none of those go through residential areas. And it's kind of hard to show, but, Bill, if you go back by Elk Springs Draw there, the ditch is really just going from there on the Forest Service over to Rocky Arroyo. And it's already there in place. It's all on the Forest Service. Then it hits the Rocky Arroyo and goes down. In fact, I think it's Forest Service all the way down, isn't it?
Yes.
All the way to those lakes. It's all Forest Service.
Councilmember Hatch.
Just by way of knowing, there's no claim to this water, no adjudications associated with this water?
Oh, yeah. There's lots of adjudications associated with it. You know, Cholo's claimed the water, the City of Cholo and the Cholo Irrigation Company, and the adjudication. Cholo Irrigation Company, which was started, you know, I don't... We'll have to have Larry Whipple here to tell us the history, but it started in the late 1800s, has a real early priority date on this water. And with our agreements with Cholo Irrigation, we feel good that we have the prior rights. But it's all subject to the adjudication, as you know, with the Navajo and Hopi tribes and all those cases going on. But for right now, we're using it.
We're gonna use it.
It's our priority, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Crittenen, you want to give that a second try?
I'll try it again. Okay. I move to approve the agreement with Silver Creek Irrigation District and Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company for the Elk Springs Draw Water Management Plan.
I think we have a motion, second by councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? A call for the vote. All those in favor?
I just wanted to say real quick, we still need Forest Service approval, which we're seeking to make this all happen. But this is all part of it. So everybody's clear, we still gotta get Forest Service approval.
All those in favor? Any opposed? See if that pass seven to zero. Next item is consideration of resolution number R 2016-07, proposing a permanent adjustment to 1979-80 base expenditure limitation for the City of Cholo. Mr. Johnson.
I don't come to the council a lot, but when I do, I get my money's worth. Okay. Voters of City of Cholo approved another extension of the city's alternative expenditure limitation, otherwise known as the Home Rule option, in August of 2014, with 73% of the voters voting in favor of Home Rule. This Home Rule extension is effective for four fiscal years, from fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2018. Under Home Rule, the council is allowed to establish its own expenditure limitation. The majority of the council members present to approve any increase in local tax rates. The continuing... The continuing of Home Rule indicates that local control of the city's budget is important to Cholo's citizens, which mirrors the council's position. All cities and towns in Arizona operate under an expenditure limitation resulting from a referendum approved by Arizona voters in 1980. The referendum placed limits on the total amount a municipality could spend each year. The expenditure limitation amount is unique to each municipality based on the city's total expenditures in 1980 and its population in 1978. The limitation amount is then adjusted for inflation and growth. Given the state of the economy, inflationary factors, and Cholo's growth since 1980, the state imposed expenditure limitation does not accurately reflect the services the city provides. The limitation does not account for Cholo's expanded boundaries or the new or increased services over the past 35 years. City staff recommends the council propose to the voters a permanent adjustment to the 1979-80 expenditure base. A permanent base adjustment would have no impact on the city's existing taxes, revenues, Home Rule, or the state mandated balanced budget requirement. It would, however, permanently recognize the city's expanded service area and levels of service provided by city employees. Resolution R 2016-07 would propose to the voters that the 1979-80 base expenditure of approximately 1.4 million be adjusted to 5.9 million. When adjusted for growth and inflation, this permanent adjustment would provide for an expenditure limitation of $55,872,706 in fiscal year 2017. A permanent base would continue to give the council local control to adopt balanced budgets, thereby providing citizens with current levels of service with in existing resources. Resolution R 2016-07 would mimic the Home Rule options restrictions by permanently establishing a required 75% council majority for a tax increase and permanently establishing a cash reserve of at least $1 million. Moving to a permanent base adjustment would reduce future election costs by eliminating the need for Home Rule election every four years. With an affirmative vote of 2/3 of the council, resolution number R 2016-07 would refer the question of permanently increasing the City of Cholo's 1979-80 basic expenditure of $1.443 million to $5.9 million to the voters at the August 30 primary election.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Yes. Regarding the requirement for the 75% vote of the council to increase taxes, is that a requirement for an adjusted base by Arizona law?
No, it's... What we're recommending is the council self-imposes that.
Right. We have done that in the past regarding Home Rule. And by memory, when we've asked for consideration of this adjusted base, I didn't know that we had imposed that in the past. But I'm seeing that if we go forward with this, the people in our city that would decide to vote for this would still have the protection built in that it would require 75% of the council to increase taxes.
That's correct. The only... The one change we were making in our recommendation, the current Home Rule requires 75% of those council members present. The proposal here is 75% of the city and council. So it's the entire council.
In plain English, any two council members opposing a tax increase would stop it.
Correct.
And so this... I'm wanting our people to realize that the council is not trying to set this thing up to be runaway spending. And there's no way, no matter what the City Council of Cholo did, that they can change the law that requires us to operate under a balanced budget. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually a cost-saving measure for the city going forward. And it's also a little bit of a protection, you know, going forward as well, that we don't always have to go back, you know, to the voters every four years, which is a cost. And really, you know, we don't know if the state would ever change this, or, you know, they're asking us to operate in 1980 numbers. We ought to ask them to do the same. See how effective they would be. But at the same time, I think it's something that we need to educate the voter on, let them know that it is something that there is self-imposed restrictions here. And above that, we've also put the measure of our million dollars that we've put on top of that as well, in addition to it. My question is, have we ever had a budget that succeeded the 55? I mean, that's just expenditure limitation. Have we ever had a budget that's larger than 55,000 under the Home Rule? Can we... When you have something that was higher, but you didn't spend that much, though?
We have. There's certain exemptions under it that... We've never had one that would exceed that. We've had $59 million budgets or 62, but under the expenditure limitation, we haven't. We wouldn't exceed that. All this does, you still have an expenditure limitation, but it increases that amount.
Any other questions, comments? Councilwoman Kukavas?
Some exceptions from the Home Rule. What are some of those types of projects that would be an exception?
There... Justin probably can help me out, but there are debt service payments can be an exception. If you... There's certain things you can build in fees that you establish that can be an exception. Justin, any others?
There are a few others. Looking at the current budget, it would be about $12 million worth of exceptions. So you could exceed the 55 by about 12 million, and then the exceptions would come out of that number. But it's like Ed said, it's debt service and other things. It doesn't... It's not gonna allow us to just go and increase our operating and things. There are only certain lists of items that qualify.
I mean, on the other side of that, if we don't pass this and we go back to the voters, you know, every four years, and it doesn't get passed, what are our limitations then?
If Home Rule doesn't pass next time, I'm not sure what the ramifications would be. Our number right now is about $12 million. So basically, we would collect the money still. We would have all of our taxes and all our fees and everything. We just wouldn't be able to spend it. So it doesn't change the tax rate. All it does is changes the control of the local council on how to spend what we collect.
So we would only be able to spend $12 million of whatever we collect?
In four years' time, the... They look at a... There's a couple of factors, census, the population's one, and then there's another adjustment that they calculate. So it would be probably slightly more than 12 than what it is today, but it's still not gonna be near enough to provide all the services that are required or that we're used to having.
It'd be a significant reduction in services.
Councilmember Crittenen.
If I recall, what we're talking about, the $12 million is what we could use our revenues for to spend. Any of our budget over and above that, and I'm gonna use layman's terms, we'd have to go out and borrow the money, our bonds or whatever, to cover the rest of our budget to run the city.
I believe there's some exception where you can do that, but not for all things. I think... We believe there'd be some cut in services if we did pass.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is really the place for this, but I feel compelled to point out that the number that they give you for inflation to apply to that old 80 number. And I want to say, I think there were some very well-meaning people that set about to get this law passed. They just didn't have enough foresight to realize where it was going. But the number they give us to adjust by inflation is not at all real. And one of the examples that came to my mind was our crack sealing compound. I'm going by memory, but it is so far superior to the old crack sealing compound. You folks see it laid out there on the road and how it stays and holds the road together. But it went up like 60-some percent over the old oil. But it's a better product. Well, this law of expenditure limitation doesn't take that into consideration. So what it would really be telling us to do is go ahead and use the old product and let your road fall apart, instead of using the new product, because it won't fit in your inflationary numbers for adjustments. So anyhow, people have studied this thing and looked at it and might be considered to be conservative, like me. Think this is a good idea, and I hope that anybody that would like to discuss it with me would get a hold of me. I'll spend time sharing with you. But I intend to vote yes on this and ask the voters in Cholo to approve it.
Thank you. Any other discussion this evening? I'll look for a motion. I'll make it. I move to approve resolution R 2016-07, proposing a permanent adjustment to the 79-80 base expenditure limitation for the City of Cholo, and place this proposition on the August 30th, 2016, primary election ballot. Motion have a second by councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See if that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item we have tonight is summary of current events. Council members wishing to... Some events may do so. Councilmember Crittenen.
I'd like to say that three of us in attendance tonight went and bowled for the CASA group and had a wonderful time, raised money to take care of the children in this part of the state. And it was a lot of fun, and I thank everybody that participated.
Thank you. Councilmember Halsap.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody, this Saturday is opening day of Little League in Cholo, Arizona, from about 11 o'clock to 7 or 8 o'clock Saturday. We're gonna open it up with Navajo Taco Dinner, introduce all the players from the Little T-Ball Players, Farm League, all the way up to the juniors, and have some games going and a fun time for everybody. So please make it out to the Little League fields this Saturday for our opening ballgame for Cholo Little League. Thank you.
Any other council member?
That was it?
Yeah, I was just falling asleep there. Just a reminder, first weekend, full weekend in May is the barbecue throwdown and the city anniversary. It'll be on Saturday. The 7th, I believe, noon or 11 o'clock. Come on out and visit some of the barbecue teams and enjoy some music and have a good time at the senior ball field.
Thank you. I just reported that here's just councilmember Crittenen, councilwoman Kukavas, and councilmember Hatch, and our city attorney and city manager, myself. We had an opportunity of having a meeting with our senators, Flake and McCain. I was grateful for that opportunity to share some of the things that are happening in our region and areas that we have, as well as some of you may have had a chance to stay for lunch. But we appreciate them visiting our community and at least showing some concern that we have in the area, and hopefully we can move forward with some of the things to help in our forests and the things that are happening. This time, I'll turn the turn to our city manager.
Few items. As we mentioned before in here, the Neil Diamond Tribute Band, Diamond and the Rough will be... Have a concert this Friday at 7:30 PM at the Cholo School District Auditorium. Tickets are $12 each and can be purchased online at choloaz.com.
Tickets are $12 each and can be purchased online at cholowaz.gov at City Hall or Aquatic Center, or they can be purchased at the door at auditorium. Our recreation staff is accepting registrations for May swim lessons and for the annual men's Memorial Day softball tournament, and that number is 532-4140. On April 20th, from 5 to 9 PM, we'll have the annual tip a cup at La Connell's. That's a Wednesday, April 20th. Our police personnel will be there as servers or bus to tables, and we'll ask for generous tips, and all the proceeds will benefit our local Special Olympics. Again, that's April 20th, 5 to 9 PM. In Public Works Projects, the crews will... Are completing a sewer realignment project at the intersection of 11th and Hunning in downtown. The project will then shut down temporarily with additional improvements later this year. But in addition, a different project, there'll be pedestrian improvements in the downtown area on 9th Street and on Hall Street. That's was... That began this week with some surveying. And on Monday, April 18th, crews will begin Phase 3 of the waterline improvement project in Fairway Park. April 10th through 16th is the National Library Week. It's a chance to check out our library's new offerings, including the new coffee shop that opened this past Monday. On Wednesday, April 20th at 10 AM, a children's author, Kristin Anderson-Satone, will visit the library, and she'll read selections from her new book and sell copies of the book at 20% off the cover price. And again, that'll be April 20th, 10 AM. And as has been mentioned by our vice mayor, our 63rd anniversary and barbecue throwdown will be Saturday, May 7th. And we'll also be kicking off a new regional event, a two-county event, Apache, Navajo Counties, and most of the cities within those counties. It'll be the White Mountain Geo-Tour. There'll be a booth at the barbecue throwdown and anniversary to explain that program. Festivities at the Senior Field Park will begin at 11 AM and last until 5 PM. There'll be food vendors, barbecue samplings, a free kids zone, live music, a four-on-four volleyball tournament, and a 5K fun run. And if you need more information on any of those events associated with that barbecue throwdown or anniversary party, you can call 532-4140. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is scheduling of meetings. Anybody have any other meetings? Just be aware of our Thursday night meeting and then the budget meetings that we have through the rest of the month here.
We don't have any more room left in our lives for any more meetings.
The Thursday meeting will be at town hall, starting at 6:00, and then we'll go into budget discussions following the town hall.
Any other business on it during this meeting?